Item 396 is with Lumen Surf Incorporated through the EMA Communications Department. This is for the lightning replacement and monitoring for all three Rockdale County Public Safety Towers. This replaces Contract 2020-131 with Strobe Tech LLC. The amount is $11,652 annually for the first five years with a total of $58,260 plus the $5,250 annually the six years. And this is a five-year lease and buyout and annual monitoring after the five years.
It's a mouthful there.
It was, yes.
All right, next item.
Item 397 is a requisition with the Stormwater Utility Department for Patrick and Associates Incorporated. This is for surveying and staking construction sites and additional $15,000 for the purchase order.
Sure.
Item 398 is requisition with the Water Resources and Wastewater Department through Exilem Water Solutions USA Incorporated. This is the repair of a large pump at Old Salem Pump Station in the amount of $34,742.49. Item 399 is a requisition with the Water Resources Department for Industrial Chemicals for the Algeicides in the amount of $43,258.73. Item 400 is a requisition for the General Services Department for Jericho Design Group, the structural design of the administration building in the amount of $52,350, and this is submitted for ratification. Item 401 is a requisition through the General Services Department for Great Southern Recreation. This is for a new playground and pavilion with tables for Lorraine Trailhead Park in the amount of $309,500, and this is SLOSS-funded.
Very good.
Item 402 is a requisition through the General Service Department for Allen Vigil Ford for two 2022 Ford F-1250s for animal control in the amount of $103,818, and this is host-funded.
So, go ahead.
Can we go back to 400, Jericho Design Group? So, this is all the renovations that was, that we've already done?
No, this is for, to assess the structure of the floors of this building. There's a little bit of settling that we noticed on some of the door frames and things of that nature. So, they're assessing the structure and they're going to provide us recommendations on moving forward.
Okay. So, Executive Director Sanders said that in a very nice kind of way, Commissioner. The truth of the matter is, this building has some serious integrity problems and issues. In fact, the third floor of the admin building tends to sway from time to time. If you ever visit Director Holmes's office, and she'll have a meeting with the door closed, and all of a sudden, the door opened. But this is nothing new. We've had these issues for a while. We've just been patching it up and patching it up. This is another opportunity until we get to a point to do something on a greater scale. But the truth of the matter is, we do have some integrity issues.
I guess, well, okay. I mean, I just don't want it to be anything like what happened in Florida. We have structural issues. That's very concerning, and we probably should have done it before now.
Yeah, well, it was an issue of getting there financially. And it is our greatest prayer with all of our inspectors that we're not in a situation that's in dire straits as severe as they were or are in the state of Florida. However, it is a high concern. But I wanted to just be very candid with you about what's really going on. She put it in a very politically correct way, but the truth of it is, we've got some issues. I wanted to go back, Executive Director Rutledge, to item 401. I just wanted to highlight the work of our local SLOSS committee because I think so often, we kind of blaze over the work that they do here in Rockdale County. Commissioner, as you know, the Lorraine Trailhead, this upgrade of this new playground equipment, pavilions with tables, all is coming from SLOSS funding, and that is a big deal. And I think, first of all, I thank the citizens of Rockdale County, but I also thank those people who serve and volunteer their time on the SLOSS committee to help work with county leaders to identify projects throughout Rockdale County that are in need of funding and extra attention. And this is just one of those projects. So, I just wanted to point that out because I think a lot of folks don't know what SLOSS is, the service, how much it means to Rockdale County. We are the second smallest county in the state. If we did not have SLOSS funding, we truly would be up the creek without a paddle. So, I just want to say thank you to the SLOSS committee as well as thank you to the citizens. These are your hard-earned pennies going to work to improve different parts of our, our community. Parks and Recs is just one part of it. Public Safety is also included in that as well as Transportation and Senior Services. So, just wanted to point that out. Thank you so much.
Okay, are we ready?
Yes.
Item 403 is a requisition for the Rockdale County Fire and Rescue Department for the American Safety and Firehouse Incorporated. This is for 19 air cylinders in the amount of $16,910, and this is host-funded.
Okay.
Item 404 is a requisition with Rockdale County Fire and Rescue Department for Fisher Scientific for the SCBA fittings in the amount of $130,484.90, and this is also host-funded.
Mm-hmm.
Item 405 is a requisition with RDOT for QK4. This is for the traffic study for Old Covington Highway in the amount of $44,664.43. Item 406 is an expenditure request with DeKalb County Revenue and License Administration through Water Resources Department. This is for the sewage treatment for May 2021 in the amount of $71,034.33. Item 407 is an expenditure request for Velasio for Technology Services Department. This is for the Microsoft Dynamics GP Enhancement E1 Maintenance Smart Builder McCorma Renewal in the amount of $21,140. Item 408 is a request for surplus of equipment through the Sheriff's Office and Juvenile Court.
Okay.
Item 409 is a transmittal resolution for the Capital Improvements Element, the 2021 Annual Update. Item 410 is a future land use amendment case 2021-05, in ordinance to amend the future land use map of Rockdale County's comprehensive plan as amended so as to re-designate property located at 1774 and 1806 Flatshoals Road Southeast from the low-density residential agriculture to the high-density residential future land use category to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This will be submitted for a second reading next Tuesday.
Good.
And Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Washington, just as a reminder to everyone today, this is just the work session. There will be no, the public hearing has closed out on these items, and the vote will take place next Tuesday.
Yes, thank you.
Item 411 is a rezoning case 2021-07, in ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County, Georgia as amended by rezoning property located at 1774 and 1806 Flatshoals Road Southeast from the R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District to the RM Residential Multi-Family Zoning District to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. Item 412 is a special use permit case 2021-01, in ordinance to amend the official zoning map of Rockdale County as amended to authorize a special use permit for a de-watering facility at 5180 Highway 20 Northwest Loganville, Georgia 30052 to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. Item 413 is rezoning case 2021-08, in ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning property at 2200 Plunkett Road Northwest from M1/C, the Limited Industrial with Conditions of Approval, and M2-C, General Industrial with Conditions of Approval zoning districts, to the M2 General Industrial Zoning District to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other Item 414 is a rezoning case 2021-09, in ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning property located at 0 Lester Road Northwest from the M1/C Limited Industrial with Conditions of Approval zoning district to the M2 General Industrial Zoning District to impose conditions upon the property and to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. Item 415 is future land use case 2021-06, in ordinance to amend the future land use map of Rockdale County's comprehensive plan as amended so as to re-designate property located at 1101 Johnson Road Southwest from the Commercial and High Density Residential Future Land Use categories to the High Density Residential Future Land Use category to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. Item 416 is a rezoning case 2021-10, in ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning property located at 1101 Johnson Road Southwest from the C2 General Commercial Zoning District to the RM Residential Multi-Family Zoning District to impose conditions upon the property and to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. Item 417 is rezoning case 2021-11, in ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning property located at 1900 Lester Road Northwest from R1, the Single Family Residential Zoning District, to the M1 Limited Industrial Zoning District to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. Item 418 is a future land use case 2021-07, in ordinance to amend the future land use map of Rockdale County's comprehensive plan as amended so as to re-designate property located at 1900 Lester Road Northwest from the Medium Density Residential Future Land Use category to the Light Industrial Future Land Use category to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. Item 419 is also a future land use case. This, this case number is 2021-08, in ordinance to amend the future land use map of Rockdale County's comprehensive plan as amended so as to re-designate property located at 4711 Highway 20 Southeast and 905 and 0 Bell Road Southeast from the Medium Density Residential Future Land Use category to the Commercial Future Land Use category to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. Item 420 is a rezoning case 2021-12, in ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning property at 4711 Highway 20 Southeast and 905 and 0 Bell Road Southeast from the AR Agricultural Residential Zoning District to the C1 Local Commercial Zoning District to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. Item 421 is rezoning case 2021-13, in ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning property located at 2720 Salem Road Southeast from the MXDC Mixed Use Development with Conditions zoning district to the MXD Mixed Use Development Without Conditions zoning district to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. Item 422 is a text amendment case 2021-15, in ordinance to amend the text of Section 218-1 Permitted Use Table of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County as amended regarding ice cream parlors, snacks, and non-alcoholic beverage bars and retail bakeries to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. Item 423 is a text amendment request, case number 2021-16, in ordinance to amend the text of Section 214-5 One Principal Use Authorized Per Lot of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County as amended to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other Item 424 is text amendment request case 2021-17, in ordinance to amend the text of 218-1 Permitted Use Table of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County as amended regarding rental and leasing of equipment and goods to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. Item 425 is text amendment request 2021-18, in ordinance to amend the text of Section 202-6 Relationship to Comprehensive Plan of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County as amended to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. Item 426 is rezoning case 2021-14, in ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning property located at 2397 Irish Drive Southeast from the R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District to the M1 Limited Industrial Zoning District to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. Item 427 is a requisition with DECA. This is for higher ground recorder replacement. This is due to a lightning strike in the amount of $23,750, and it's submitted for ratification. Item 428 is a requisition with DYSIS Solutions Incorporated. This is for the network equipment and connectivity for Johnson Park Addiction, addition, and this is for, this is also SLOSS-funded in the amount of $52,356.41, and it's submitted for ratification.
Thank you, Director. Commissioner, you have any comments, concerns on any of those items?
No.
I just want to take a very quick moment to remind everyone, this is, as Executive Director Rutledge has already pointed out, this is our work session. No decisions will be made. This is an opportunity through work session for the commissioners, the board, to be able to review items that will be voted on, on the following week. So, no decision will be made. This is an opportunity to continue to review. If there were concerns or questions, myself and the commissioners would be discussing those concerns item by item as we've gone through the work session process this morning. So, I just wanted to bring clarity to that so people won't be confused as to how we operate and move forward. At this time, I think we're ready for public comment already.
I think we are. I have not received any red cards.
I see Mr. Kelchak.
Okay. Well, we'll go ahead and read the disclaimer then while we're doing that.
All right.
Thank you. As a reminder, public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Comments relative to any issues that are currently going through the public hearing process, matters that are in active litigation, political campaigning, or partisan politics will not be heard in this meeting. Speakers are to address the chairman, not each other or the audience, and are expected to conduct themselves in an appropriate manner. The use of abusive or profane language shall not be allowed. No debate or argument between speakers and/or members of the audience shall be permitted.
Thank you. Mr. Kelchak, come right on up, please. Good morning.
Good morning. Commissioners, citizens of Rockdale County, George Kelchak. One item this morning, this is regarding the special use permit on the Johnson property de-watering, which was brought to your attention last week. There was illegal--
Mr. Chairman, I apologize to interrupt you, Mr. Kelchak, but that item is going through the public hearing process right now. So, the time to speak to that has already passed. We had two public hearings in front of the Planning Commission and in front of the zoning public hearing, yes.
And thank you so much, Executive Director Rutledge. She is right with that point of order. So, unless you want to talk about another item, that item has already exhausted its opportunity to be discussed.
Okay, so what options do the citizens have to bring this, all these other information to the attention?
Here's the option that they have. They can contact either one of the three commissioners and express their concern as the commissioners are reviewing the information and processing their decision prior to the vote.
Okay, so we can provide a package of information?
You can email the information or drop it off at the office.
Package, okay. Because we have, we have a lot of information here.
Thank you so much.
All right.
All right. Thank you, and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. I'd like to now call up Terry Mc--
I guess that's going to apply to me too because I'm--
It will, it will apply, absolutely. That way, I don't repeat it again. Yes, sir. So, is that you, Terry?
I'm Terry.
Okay, all right.
But, but can I say that I am very interested in getting any information that you have regarding the de-watering facility? I was scheduled to go out there today, but I don't know if the weather's going to permit, but--
So, what she's saying is that feel free to go next door to our office, drop off any information, pick up her card, send her an email. She is looking for additional information as she's processing her decision. Okay? Thank you, Terry. All right, very good. Okay, that concludes our portion of public comment at this time. We're going to move right on into board comment. Commissioner Washington?
You know, thank you, Chairman. The only thing that--
Sorry.
I'm sorry if I missed something different. Just so you--
Come on up, Ms. Nash. Come on up. We're going to extend this public comment so we can hear from you. Absolutely. Not a problem.
There's a bigger issue involved, and some of that package will help you understand probably what that bigger issue is. That bigger issue is management. Somebody--
And just for the record, just for the record, for all the newcomers in town who've been here only about two hours in Rockdale, tell them who you are, how intimate you are. Tell them who you are, Ms. Nash.
I'm Elaine Nash.
There you go.
I have been, lived in Rockdale for 55 years, and I have been involved before, before we even had zoning, I was involved. And so, I've been active for a long time. What I'm concerned about, and this business of actually seeing the sediment that's coming from upstream, which coming from co-parks, on the photos that, Mr. Mitchell, the Google Earth photos show a very different color of sediment. There's 150 acres graded upstream--
Yes, ma'am.
--by co-part, and it's active in that there are cars moving around it and stuff going on all the time. We have a sediment problem in the reservoir, but there's also telltale signs now in those things, in those photos, that show sediment coming. It's a light sediment. It's like nothing else in the stream. And if you ever wanted to try to get co-part to come get their dirt, which is the easiest way sometimes to sue somebody, in other words, you've got to have adequate and decent evidence.
So, so, hear me, hear me. Let me just say this, Ms. Nash. In all respect to the process, I'm going to have to interrupt you at this point because what I'd like to encourage you to do, as I've done the others regarding this particular issue, to be sure to load all three of us up with that information. Send us an email, or if you have some hard copy material, be sure to get that to us. And feel free to drop it off next door at the office so that each one of the three commissioners can review the information. But in respect of the process, we're going to have to--
Let me say one other thing because it comes from long experience in paying attention to how governments work. There is, the Water Authority would make a perfect entity to watch after the reservoir long-term. Watch after it and plan for the dredging that needs to probably go on, off and on throughout its life, and we hope that that life lasts 100 years. It took 25 years to get this particular reservoir in place, and there is an RWR that was a survey done. Okay, what happens is, RWR will say, oh, that's a watershed issue. It's somebody else's job. Watershed will say, no, that's a water quality issue. It's, it's your job because you're the one that treats the water. There is also another area that probably will need to be dredged that Dwight Wicks was planning for, and that's the water intake because it gets sediment too from a different flowing stream.
Well, let me say--
And this, these issues--
Right.
--are expensive and need good planning--
Yes, ma'am.
--and need somebody looking after it forever.
Well, I can't think of--
And y'all are not forever. Y'all are short-term.
No, we're not. We're for right now. So, let me say this, though, in all seriousness because we appreciate you coming forward. You are certainly respected throughout Rockdale County as an authority when it comes to water and water quality. I can't think of a better asset, a more important asset here in Rockdale County for us to rally behind and support and protect.
And protect.
And I will tell you that myself and both of the commissioners are just as concerned as anybody should be here in Rockdale County in terms of protecting the quality of our water. That's one of the biggest pieces of economic development bragging posts that we have here in Rockdale County--
That's right.
--is that we have our own reservoir, and that's a big plus for this community. So, you have our full attention. We certainly do appreciate all of what you're doing and your presence this morning. I just want to give the process the respect that it deserves. I know the commissioner is planning on making a trip out there. I'm making a second trip out there myself. We're processing our thoughts, noticing-- No decision is made today, but we will be coming back and rendering a decision. So at this point, for I want to close out the portion of public comment.
Well, I will. Thank you.
And I thank you so much.
I thank you for listening, but I want, please, the authority or is a group of citizens and part of that authority knows, or some of the members that have been on that authority have been been had to dredge their own lakes.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's.
Thank you, Ms. Nash, and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. This concludes, Commissioner, I want to yield to you.
So after this was brought to my attention a couple of weeks ago, I did have a few conversations with some key personnel, and I'm understanding that there is already a system in place to for dredging or or the timelines for dredging. So maybe it might be important to maybe present that at one of our meetings that, you know, that we are already on top of dredging and sediment control and what we're doing to make sure that we protect our waters.
I'm going to yield to Chief Kate. He's been working very closely with our Rockdale Water Resources Director, Director Bogan, as well as our Stormwater Director, Director Simkins. Chief Kate has been intimately involved with doing a lot of what you just recommended. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our Director, Director Bogan, through Rockdale Water Resources, and also Director Terrence Simkins from Stormwater have both been working collaboratively and have also brought in the United States Geological Survey, and they are currently having meetings, not as we speak, but they are scheduled to continue so that we can get proper best practice and documented information from that entity as it relates to the condition of the reservoir. So more information will come. I will certainly have both Directors reach out to those concerned with the information that is received. Of course, obviously, the first stop will be the commissioners, making sure that they're aware of the findings that the Director has, but we want evidence-based information, and we want them to provide that to us before we form any assumptions. So that's that's what's to come.
Professionally evidence-based people that have the training and skills.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you so much, and thank you, Commissioner. That was a great point to point out because we wanted to, number one, to assure the general public that we are protecting our reservoir. I mean, that is a big deal for us to have it here in Rockdale County. I'm going to move on. At this point, I'm going to write to Commissioner Washington with board comment.
So the biggest thing on my mind once again is COVID. You see that we've made some changes this week regarding placement of personnel. I've had to have two COVID tests in the last week because of exposure or possible exposure, and it feels like I'm playing a video game where I'm ducking COVID everywhere. So I just want to remind everybody to take it seriously. You're not just protecting yourself, you're protecting those people that have compromised immune systems. You're protecting the little ones that cannot get vaccinated. It is very serious. Our hospital rates are, their capacities are increasing again, and I think each one of us have to do our parts again, continue to sanitize, wear your masks, social distance. I know that's hard because we want to get out. I know I won't, y'all know me, I like to be out. But, you know, we might need to to restrict our comings and going a little bit on our own. Maybe it's not as important to to do certain things if we can. Definitely wash your hands. I think I said social distance. Sanitize. The minute you find out that you have been exposed, go get tested. Well, you can't do it. The minute it takes three days, you have to wait three to five days to to be tested, but as soon as you can, get tested. But also notify anybody that you know that you've come in contact so that they can go and get tested because we don't, we don't know how the, if you might not have it, but you may have passed it. So just make sure that you're that courteous to people. I know that my last contact, the person that had it immediately contacted me so that I can't wait my three days and go get tested. And of course, I came back negative, but I appreciated the process. It's it's very, very serious, and I need for people to start taking it as if it's serious because we're not going to get out of it until we all start taking it very seriously. The other thing, I know that the Task Commissioner's office was closed because they did have a situation with COVID, and I would, and I know that there was a few glitches over there, but overall, when they opened back up, they processed over twelve hundred people in three days with down four people. So I would like to commend the Task Commissioner for taking time and energy and her leadership in navigating a very, very difficult situation because, you know, her people deal directly with the public. They didn't know how how that person infected anybody. So I think she did a great job with what she had and the time and energy that she did have. So shouts out to the Task Commissioner for dealing with that and keeping the public safe and her employees safe. So that's all I have.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. I do want to echo the importance of all of the, first of all, our employees and all of the general public in terms of having a contingency plan. I want to encourage you to have a contingency plan of your own, as she stated, as numbers are increasing, particularly this Delta variant, we're not sure what's exactly going to happen. The last thing I want to do is is call the county to go back into any kind of lockdown based upon COVID. However, we've got to do a lot of, we've got to do all those things that Commissioner Washington just pointed out, social distancing, washing of hands, wearing a mask. And and one of the things I heard the Commissioner repeat over and over as it relates to this situation is respect. You're basically respecting the other people, the people around you, particularly in your workspace, your home, and in the general public. So it's an issue in a matter of respect. We we won't get out of this situation until we start hunkering down and doing the things that need to be done to make sure that people are safe. So I don't want to be redundant and repeat all of what she said, but I do want to say to our staff and employees, go ahead and put in a contingency plan because I don't know what's going to happen, even with the local public school system, as students and young people return to school. There's already some cases throughout metro Atlanta where some districts have returned back to the campus, and there's already been some cases of exposure among educators, staff, faculty, staff, as well as young people inside of those schools. Rockdale Schools returned back this Thursday on the fifth of August. So we are saying, you know, a lot of this is really common sense. A lot of this is really common sense, and I think you can combine that word, Ms. Nash, with the word respect. It's common sense and respect. We want to get back to some type of normalcy, but in order to get there, we're going to have to do some basic things to get us there. So I don't want to infringe or impose on someone's personal beliefs, and I don't even want to get into that kind of conversation. I simply want you to be safe so we can get back, and this economy, let me just tell you this, let me go ahead and put that out there. We need people to get back to work. We need to move and forge the economy ahead. Well, we're not going to be able to do that until we take care of the safety and then health and wellness of our citizens. So put yourself a contingency plan in case you say, what is a contingency plan? I'm glad you asked. It's a just in case plan, just in case we go on lockdown. You've got a plan if you are a Rockdale County employee, all summer long, you were able to figure out what you was going to do with the young people, and you had somebody to watch them and take care of, keep that plan alive and keep it near you just in case because the last thing the chairman wants to do is shut down the county and go back into a mode that we were in before. That will be a last resort. However, safety and the health of our citizens as well as our employees comes absolutely first. There's been a lot of discussion about the project that's already going through the hearing process. Not much need to be said about that. I think it is certainly on, I know that it's high up on the radar with myself and the commissioners concerning the property out at fifty one eighty highway twenty northwest. We will certainly take our reservoir very, very seriously here in Rockdale County in terms of the protection of our water source. So I just want to make sure you know that this is top priority for this board and as the Commissioner stated, making sure that we have educated, skilled, trained professionals who are making decisions and doing an assessment that's in the best interest of all of Rockdale County. We spend a lot of money every month at our water treatment plant to make sure that we have the right and the proper chemicals because the same water you use day in and day out for everything in and around your house. We recycle that water, and it takes a ton of chemicals. I said that to a group of young people, and they all started to frown up when they realized that we use the same water over and over and over. We were doing a class on water quality and water safety, Ms. Nash, and when I said that, yeah, that same water, and a young man said, he was a fifth grader, he said, you mean the water from the toll and anything? I said, from both. So we use chemicals, and I had him a list of the name of those chemicals so that we can reuse that water. But our ultimate source, our reservoir, is certainly something that we have to keep high up on the radar in terms of protecting here in our community. I don't want to prolong it. Is there any need for executive session?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Right before we leave, Commissioner, I do, I've asked Director Joe Gunn and the Public Relations Department, they've got so many new informational, you've seen all the work he's already doing on our media outlets. One of the things that we're proud of here is our Toastmasters program. Director Gunn, we're ready for the monitor. Absolutely. Thank you. Should be, there it is. Just need some volume.
Rockin' Rockdale Toastmasters. First, let's hear some of your questions.
Don't you have to be a speaker to join Toastmasters?
No, not at all. In fact, we welcome all types of speakers on all levels, including brain damaged turtles. All right, my bad. In fact, we welcome all types of speakers on all levels.
Hey, isn't it for like old people?
No, people young and old can join Toastmasters, including babies.
No babies, Joe.
What?
Babies can't join.
Well, that's a tough one. Well, the Rockin' Rockdale Club conveniently offers two meeting times, the first and third Thursday from noon until one P M., and the second and fourth Thursday from six until seven P M. So you can pick a time that works best for you when you're not in your mom's basement slamming and screaming at people on social media about their politics.
Oh, Joe.
Don't say that.
Don't say that.
I love toast. Does it involve eating toast?
One hundred percent. In fact, at some of the Toastmasters meetings, it is required to eat toast while you're actually giving a speech.
Come on, Joe, you don't eat toast while giving a speech.
Wait, what?
No.
You don't?
No.
No, Toastmasters does not involve eating toast. Toastmasters is a place where great leaders and speakers are developed in a very fun and engaging learning environment, no matter your age, your profession, or comfort level. With public speaking, we'd love to have you join us. The Rockin' Rockdale Club is open to the public, and to learn more about the Rockin' Rockdale Toastmasters, you can contact Melissa Minz at melissa.minz@rockdalecountyga.gov. We look forward to having you at Toastmasters.
Just one of the many videos and projects that are coming out of our Public Relations Department, one of the things we've done, we've increased our presence on all social media outlets. A lot of times, citizens in our community just don't know if there is a central source of information where they can get collective information about the multiple things that's happening, whether in the city of Conyers or Rockdale County, and sometimes even the school board or other nonprofit organizations throughout Rockdale County. We encourage people to go to our website. Those folks that have Comcast, Xfinity, you can, if you're subscribing there, you can turn on, turn to channel twenty three on Comcast as well as all the other social media outlets we have here in Rockdale County and gain information about what's happening in Rockdale, what's going on in and around the county. Let that be your central sources and outlets of information. We encourage folks to take an active role and become civically involved so they'll be in tune with what's going on. So many times, people say, I didn't even know that was happening. Didn't know they were having a meeting. I didn't know that group was over there. I didn't know they had a Toastmasters Club here. So there's so much information. Visit the website first. We do have a county website. We are a professional organization, therefore we have a website. We also listed on all of those other social media outlets, Instagram, Twitter, Facebook, and he's doing some creative work with our employees, some fun, clean, good stuff on TikTok. So there's more coming out of Public Relations to keep you informed about what's happening here in Rockdale County. That wraps up all of the comments for me today. I just want to remind all of our residents in Rockdale County again, school opens on this Thursday. Watch us speed through the school zone. School zones are twenty five miles an hour. Slow down as young people will be standing at their bus stops, walking to some of the schools, and there'll be a lot more school traffic will pick up. So please, sir, please, ma'am, be mindful during the early morning hours and the afternoon when young people are returning back home from school. Want to be safe throughout the community.
All right.
That wraps it up. This meeting is adjourned. Happy Tuesday.